Two, one.
Good evening and welcome to the Chatham Board of Selectmen's November 24, 2020 meeting. This is remote participation only. Please note this meeting is being recorded and will be available shortly thereafter for scheduled and on-demand viewing on any smartphone or tablet device. If anyone else is recording the meeting, please notify me. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Law 30A, Section 18, and the Governor's March 23, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place, this meeting of the Chatham Board of Selectmen is being conducted via remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by calling the phone number 1-508-945-4410, conference ID 134208476, or join the meeting online via Microsoft Teams through the link in the posted agenda. While this is a live broadcast and Simon Cast on Channel 18, despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide for real-time access. We will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. Thank you. Okay. So, welcome, everybody. I think we're all present, but I'll take a roll call of the Board of Selectmen. But first, I do want to mention that please be advised to disable your video and mute your audio until the chair is called, everybody except for the board and participating presenters. So let's start with Peter Kokolas.
Present.
Corey Metters.
Present.
Deana Castro.
Present.
And Jeff Dykens.
Present.
Okay. And the chair is present, so we have a quorum. Our first order of business tonight is the meeting minutes and its acceptance of the November 7th and 17th meeting minutes. So may I have a motion to accept the November 7, 2020 goal-setting workshop meeting minutes?
Madam Chair, Peter, I move that we accept the November 7, 2020 minutes.
Okay, do I have a second? Dean, okay, that was Peter and Dean, I'll take a roll. And, sorry, everybody's going in and out of their little backgrounds a little bit. Peter.
We didn't ask if you needed any changes.
Any edits?
Yes, I'm sorry, do we have any edits? Sorry.
I don't.
Any changes? Anybody?
No.
No.
All right, well, there you go. Peter.
Aye.
Jeff.
Aye.
Corey.
Aye.
Dean.
Aye.
Chair says aye, okay. The meetings of, the minutes of November 7 have been approved five to zero. Okay, the next is the November 17, 2020 meeting. Do I have a motion to accept those minutes?
Move to accept.
Second, okay. Jeff, any additions or edits to the, to the meeting minutes?
Nope.
Wow, that's terrific. Okay, let's take a roll. Corey.
Aye.
Jeff.
Aye.
Peter.
Aye.
Dean.
Aye.
And the chair says aye. Okay, meeting minutes have been accepted for November 17, 5:00. All right, so we're going to move on to public announcements and agenda item requests. I want to just take a couple moments to note the passing of Mal Ward. Mr. Ward was very active, was a very active town volunteer. He served on the Friends of the Eldridge Public Library, Friends of Council on Aging, and volunteered at the Railroad Museum as well as First Night Committee. So our condolences to his family and our thanks for his service to the community. Another note of passing is, I just wanted to note, was former Selectman Josephine, well, Josephine Ives. She was the first female Board of Selectmen member. She served her term from, I believe it was 1988 to 1994. She served on a number of committees. I think she was instrumental in some of the work at the Eldridge Public Library. And she, I believe she was part of the, she did some work with, she volunteered with the Eldridge, the Chatham Elementary School, but mostly she was a trailblazer for Chatham. She, she actually opened the door for a lot of us to be where we are today as women in town government, and I, and I thank her for that. One of the things that I remember most vividly was her and Mrs. Bernstein, Elliot Bern, Mrs. Bernstein were, they fought to get women on the town band, and that was one of the things that I remember back in the early 90s as well. So, thank you for her service to the town and her leadership going forward, and our condolences to her family as well. Okay, so are there any public announcements or agenda item requests from the board? Okay, I'll take a roll or hand raise vote, I mean, a call for remote participants? Any agenda items or public announcements? Okay, I'm not seeing any tonight. All right, so we're going to just move right along into new business, and I want to say that the first order of business is a coronavirus update from the Director of Natural Resources, Dr. Dunkinson, and then from our Town Manager Jill Goldsmith. So, welcome, Dr. Dunkinson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, everybody. Can you all hear me well enough tonight?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I'm just getting used to the new headphone set as opposed to having to speak into the speaker on the computer. So, just quickly, run through of the numbers like we normally do. We are currently, on a worldwide basis, over 59.5 million cases of COVID-19. We are over 1,400,000 deaths worldwide. In the United States, we currently are over 12,540,000 cases. The next closest country to the U.S. is India at 9.2 million cases. So, the U.S. continues to lead, you know, I think, you know, a month or so ago, India was catching up on us fairly rapidly, and there, you know, there was some thought that maybe, maybe the U.S. would drop to number two. But as we've all seen recently, the case count in the U.S. has just been skyrocketing, almost a million cases every week, which is not good news. We are currently a little over 259,000 deaths in the United States. The second country in terms of death rate is Brazil at 169,000 cases, so almost 100,000 deaths lower than the United States. In Massachusetts, as of this afternoon, we are at 211,000 cases, and we are at 10,551 confirmed and probable deaths in the Commonwealth. Hospitalizations today are at 954 in the Commonwealth. A week ago for your meeting, we were at 8:35, so the hospitalizations have gone up 119 cases in a week. In terms of ICU admissions, we are currently at 205. Last week, we were at 159, so an increase of 46 ICU admissions in a week. In Barnstable County, as of this afternoon, we were at 2,761 cases, which is an increase since yesterday of 70 cases. And since last week, since your meeting back on the 17th, we've seen an increase of 387 cases in Barnstable County. Luckily, we have not seen a similar increase in the number of deaths in the county. Today, we are at 190, last week, we were at 188, so we've only had two additional deaths. And this just again reinforces the fact that it's the younger demographic that are accounting for the vast majority of cases right now. When we look at the 0 to 39 age demographic, those three groups are currently accounting for 56% of the cases. So again, it's, and the primary driver in that group is the 20 to 29-year-olds, which account for 21.6%. And then we have the 0 to 19-year-olds accounting for 17%, and the 30 to 39-year-olds accounting for roughly 17%. So again, it's that younger demographic, the 20, 20, 20 to 29-year-olds that continue to lead the pack, if you will.
Hold on, Dr. Dunkinson. There is somebody on the phone that needs to, that is using a phone that needs to mute their phone, we're overhearing your conversation and can't hear Dr. Dunkinson. All right, try to proceed.
Okay.
Thank you.
In Chatham, we are currently at 51 cases since the start of the pandemic, and I'm happy to report, once again, we still only have the two deaths that we had earlier, so we have not had any additional deaths in Chatham. Our case count has gone up, you know, slightly since last week, and it's sometimes difficult to give you specific numbers, only because sometimes there's a lag time when cases are actually reported into the state system. So in reality, we haven't increased any cases since last week based on the ones that we knew about, although there have been some that showed up in the state system a little bit later than your meeting last week. We have had several recent incidents of town employees either testing positive or being in close contact with someone. And just to reiterate again, it's not been work-related, it's been due to events in their personal lives, lives, so again, we just need to reiterate the importance for everyone to pay attention to what's going on in their home life and around, because as we've reported now, over multiple weeks, it is home contacts that are driving both, you know, in Massachusetts and across the country, it really is home contacts that are driving the vast majority of the cases we're seeing. You know, they're not necessarily related to work, they're not necessarily related to schools. It's really that in-home contact, and as we come up on the Thanksgiving holiday in two days, you know, we're all expecting, unfortunately, in the two weeks post-Thanksgiving to see an uptick in cases, very similar to what occurred in Canada. Pretty much two weeks to the day, from their Thanksgiving, they had a spike in cases. So as I'm sure everybody's aware, the CDC is recommending, recommending against Thanksgiving travel, although with reports coming out of the TSA over the weekend, we had some of the busiest travel days since the pandemic began. And so unfortunately, I think, you know, as everybody's reporting, we are going to see an uptick in cases. Specific to travel, there are only two states that remain on the lower-risk state map for Massachusetts, and those are Vermont and Hawaii. And I will tell you, based on information I reviewed this afternoon, I expect that we will see Vermont added to the list of high-risk states this week. That listing is only updated once a week, generally on Fridays, so I fully expect, based on the numbers coming out of Vermont, that we will see Vermont added to that list, meaning the only state that you could go to that was considered, or that is considered lower risk would be Hawaii. But keep in mind that, just like Massachusetts, Hawaii and most other states have, you know, quarantine advisories in place for visitors to their state, so. The only other thing I wanted to touch on very quickly was some news out of our DPH call this afternoon, which will be our only call for this week because of the holiday on Thursday and Friday. There was some updates on vaccine distribution that the board probably is interested in, as well as members of the public. Massachusetts expects to get their first allocation, if you will, of doses of around 60,000 doses of the Pfizer vaccine sometime around December 15, depending on when exactly Pfizer receives emergency use approval from FDA. Those initial doses will be targeted to the acute care hospitals in Massachusetts, primarily for healthcare workers that are dealing with active COVID cases. So we don't expect to see any come out for first responders or members of the public in that initial dose, but it will all be going to the acute care hospitals. And, you know, just to put it in perspective, with the limited number of doses and the number of hospitals we have here in Massachusetts, we're expecting there to be one box of vaccine per hospital, about 975 approximate doses. So it's not a huge amount when you think of, you know, each hospital only getting one box, so, you know, just to put it in perspective. And then once, the next group that will be coming from Moderna, they are anticipating going for FDA emergency use approval probably next week, so their vaccine will be coming out in basically what's being termed Phase 1B. And again, that will be targeted primarily towards hospitals and long-term care facilities for their residents, and then the next group would be further essential workers, meaning folks in education, police, fire, workers in the food, you know, industry to prepares all our food for us and whatnot. And then in Phase 1C, which would probably be later in late winter, early spring, that will be targeting adults over 65 as the next high-risk group, and we probably won't be seeing vaccine for public distribution, if you will, through local boards of health and other venues until, probably not until springtime, probably what's being called Phase 3. So that gives you some kind of an update on vaccine and when folks can expect to see that. So with that, that's all I have for updates today, and we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Bob. I imagine I should also caution people that just because this is starting to happen, that they don't put their guard down, they still have to remain vigilant. I have Dean's hand is up, and then Peter's. Dean?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Bob, the demographics that you gave, I think it was 29.6% of the cases are coming from ages 0 to 39, and 56, I'm sorry, that's 20 to 29, 56%. Excuse me. 56% of the cases coming between the ages of 0 to 39. Are those national demographics, or Massachusetts, or Barnstable County?
They were Massachusetts-specific numbers.
Okay. And what do they think is happening as far as the transmission of the disease between, from younger people? Do they think it's, because they're concerned about transmittal within the home, do they think that the younger people are giving it, passing it on to their elders? Is that what the thinking is?
That's one of the concerns, actually, right now, the, for the older demographic, if you will, you know, say those 80 years old and higher, the number of cases is actually very low. So that, you know, the older demographics, starting really at 70 years and up, the number of cases is very low, and I think, you know, that's a reflection of those folks know they're the most sensitive and are taking the most precautions, and that's why there's such concern about, you know, Thanksgiving and whatnot, where college students and younger people are coming into the households, and there is a very high risk of transmission. But, you know, right now, at least, you know, over the last couple of weeks and months, the older demographic's been actually doing much better, and I think that's why we're seeing, you know, the, the hospital and the death rates relatively low compared to what we saw last spring, when it was the opposite, you know, when it was the older demographic that was getting hit the hardest, but, you know, we've put more precautions in place, long-term care facilities are doing a much better job at protecting their residents, and that's why we've seen this kind of reversal, both in demographics and in deaths and hospitalizations.
Thank you. I'll comment, this is an incredibly fast turnaround on the vaccine.
Yeah.
Put a vaccine together in nine months, and the soft vaccine took years, the whole vaccine, the Saban vaccine, so it's a remarkable achievement on the part of our public health authorities and frankly, the administration. They deserve, you all deserve credit. Thank you.
Thank you, Dean. Peter?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I'd just like to add that I think the private sector did an outstanding job. As much as we hit Big Pharma, they came up, they were given the money to do it, but they're the ones that are, that are, that are getting the vaccine, and I'm not discounting all that my murdered colleague mentioned, but I, I, I think they ought to get, at least on this case, an attaboy. I just want to make up, there's a, there's a couple of studies that came out, and I also was on a webinar with a couple of universities that are out of, out of Boston, and, and this virus, stating the obvious, you know, they made the comment that it's, it's an incredibly contagious virus, and the death rates are still greater than, than the flu. You know, the flu is like 0.1%. Now, you look at the demographics, if you look at the death rates, they are coming down, which is good, and everybody asks the question, why? And nobody really knows exactly, but there's a number of reasons that have been given, especially in how doctors and hospitals are taking care of people, they have, they have a better way to handle it. But the one thing that struck me is they, they made the point that, yes, things are coming down, but the death rates among even younger folks are more excessive than they would normally be. In other words, it's not just the flu, but it's other things that it impacts, and the question is, is it preconditioning or whatever, but no matter what, it's causing more, more younger folks to, to be, to have a higher rate, and then the transmission is then, you know, is then their, the transmission rate is also very high. So I don't know, there's no good news here. If you look at, you know, the world, and you, you look at any, never mind one newscast, I mean, Sweden, Sweden's testing, or the Swedish experiment isn't working. I have my brothers out in the Midwest, South Dakota, North Dakota, all those places that shunned mass are now having major problems. Iowa's having major problems. I think that we are fortunate, but we, as you say, should not be taking it for granted. And there's not a question in there, I just had to get that out. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Any other questions from the board? Any questions from the remote participants? Please raise your hand, if you're able, on your Teams app or Speak Out, and I'll note your name. Okay, I don't see anybody raising their hand. Okay, all right. Thank you, Dr. Bob. Next is our Town Manager Jill Goldsmith.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. So, in response to the anticipated surge of COVID-19 cases resulting from the holidays, I asked the Department head to put together a plan for workers or employees to work safe over the holidays and during school vacations. So they're working on that. My plan is to effectuate it on Monday, November 30, and have that as phase one for us to go through December 11, and we'll check in to see how things are going. Similar to March of 2020, I don't expect the public to see any change in services or any diminished services. I can say that the park program will resume operations on November 30. Board and committees will continue to meet, but one impact to the public that we're going to do is temporarily suspend in-person meetings and appointments at town offices, and that's to limit the person-to-person contact. We haven't had a lot of appointments, and certainly if there's a circumstance that warrants immediate attention, or, I'm sorry, a resident or a member of the public needs assistance, we'll certainly make that accommodation, but we don't really see that as an impact. And that will be, essentially, we have appointments on Tuesdays and Thursdays, Tuesday afternoon, Thursday mornings, and those will just be on hold until about December 14. So again, I'll report to the board before then on how that will take place. As I said, I expect no impact to the public. We've figured it out how to actually improve our service offerings through online, but staff will be in the office, answering the phone, leaving items in the vestal here at 549, and there's other drop-off locations for other, other business to pick up, such as applications to drop off and so forth. So again, I really don't see any change to the way that we provide services, except that it's just during this certain timeframe. that it's just during this certain timeframe where if we have employees that are going to need to report to work, and if we can somehow alter the amount of in-person contacts that they have, that will provide safety for them. Our workplace safety program has worked out well, our workplace modifications are working, but some of the offices still have, you know, a number of employees that are reporting to work that still have the barriers and so forth. Again, just we want to make sure that staff is safe and there's no interruption of service to the public. So that is it for my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Jill. Jeff has a question.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of questions, Jill. Were the face-to-face meetings by the public popular? Were they filled up, or was it sporadic?
No, and I can get the figures. Dr. Bob just released them today. We didn't have a lot. A lot of them were with the town clerk's office, and the annex had a few appointments. But there really haven't been a lot, and especially with 549 Main Street. I know Shawna's doing her alcohol license processing. We've just been leaving items either in the vestibule or or a person has, you know, needed an appointment, but we really haven't had that many, and I'll get that number to you.
And just a quick follow-up, the demand for for Zoom meetings by our advisory committees and or regulatory committees, how are we doing there? I know the golf committee wanted to meet, I was just wondering how we're doing.
Yeah, so we've approved any committee that wants to meet, it's just working to get the committee members trained. So I know I have golf advisory, energy committee as well. Aunt Lydia's Cove had requested an in-person meeting that was logistically too difficult to fulfill. So I said that we would try to revisit it after the first of the year, unless we can work out something in the in the meanwhile. So that was one. But yeah, any any committee chairman that's asked to hold a meeting, they've been accommodated, they've had training done by IT. Live meetings are still just reserved for the regulatory boards because it does take a person inside the annex, you know, to do that. So that's a limitation on his hours of work, and and I think it's worked out, but I haven't heard anything. Oh, Independence Day Parade Committee, I know that they had requested to meet, I'm not sure if they've actually met yet.
Thank you, Jill. That's all I got.
Okay, great. Any other questions from the board for Jill? Any questions from the remote participants? Please raise your hand or call out your name. Okay, hearing none. That's it, Jill, thank you. Okay, all right. The next item is public comments, and this is where the public remote participants can have an opportunity to comment on any of the business agenda items that are listed in Item D on the agenda. I'm going to ask for any public comments on business agenda items, please raise your hand if you're doing the the Teams app, or call out your name, and I'll call on you. I'm hearing none. All right. Then we're going to move on. And our first order of business tonight is a public hearing. It's a continuation. Am I right that this is a continuation from the last meeting that was held November 10th, 2020? And within this public hearing process, you are able to speak on this matter after the presentation. So we're going back to look at a poll that's to be placed on Main Street, and we had it had been a changed location. So we think it was Sluckman and Castro had offered the suggestion that we continue this, I think it was Eugene, that we continue this until the butters saw the amended location. So is there somebody, Jill, speaking to this matter that's on right now? Or?
Hi, Tom Stanton from Verizon.
Hi, Tom. Welcome.
Thank you.
Would you like to speak to this, please?
Yes, I think all the new documentation has been sent to the town, and I met with the DPW director, Tom, and we moved the poll, the new poll, four feet away from the walkway between the number 573 and 569 Main Street. So he was he was good with that, and that's what we'd like to go with.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any questions from the board? Dean?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Stanton. So I'm looking at the revised plan, and I gather that was re-noticed to the butters. They were saying the butters were re notified. Is that correct, Jill? Or Sean?
Hi, this is Shawna. Yes, they the new plan and the new documents were sent to the the butters.
Okay. So have we heard any, this is in the vicinity of of Puritan Clothing and the Methodist Church. Have we had any feedback from those two institutions at all? Has there been any conversation with them? And Mr. Stanton, are you aware of any concerns they might have? I haven't heard of any, but.
I haven't heard of any either.
Okay. And this is a poll, as you stated last time, this is, you cannot put this equipment, which is necessary for the upgrade, to support the upgrade that you're making on Cross Street in that vicinity. You indicated you could not put that on an existing poll, it's much equipment to go. I would imagine it can't go underground either easily. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Dean. Corey, you have a question?
Just to follow up on Dean's question about any correspondence from any of the butters, do we know if there's anyone on the meeting who is a, I guess, on a butter who was looking to speak on this tonight? I know there's a bunch of names that are up on the screen, I just I was just wondering if there's anyone out there who wanted to speak on this.
I was going to get to that, Corey.
Other than other than that, I mean, I guess the only question I have is, you know, we've got three poles on a span of 128 feet. Are we being told this is absolutely necessary? I mean, I guess that's that's the only real question I have.
Mr. Stanton?
With my with my correspondence with the Eversource, this is an upgrade for Eversource. And they they need this equipment on the on a new pole for switching capabilities. So if they lose one leg, it automatically will 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 go to the other leg. So they looked at it, and there's so much equipment on these other poles that they didn't have enough room. So that's why the request for the new pole.
All right.
Okay, Corey. Are there any are there any participants, anybody that any butters or anybody that would like to have questions or or comment on the on the pole placement?
This is Brooke McKay, representing Puritan.
Okay, hold on. Say that again, from the representative from Puritan, please.
This is Brooke McKay, I'm the store manager for that location.
Okay. Go ahead. Would you like to speak?
Yes, please. Thank you very much. Just concerned in terms of interruption of either power or data during business hours on that. Can we, are we expecting that we're going to be down and offline during the installation?
I I can't talk for Eversource, but this type of install shouldn't shouldn't cause any interruption in service to the best of my ability. Like I, I'm representing Verizon, not Eversource. So to the best of my ability, you wouldn't have any outage.
Jill, is there? Go ahead, Ms. McKay.
Thank you. No, that was really ultimately our greatest concern, and obviously access to to street parking for the vehicles for our customers. But the SegWON project will have been finished by then, and plenty of parking is around. So those are our two greatest, I mean, those are our biggest concerns. So thank you for addressing that.
Thank you, Jill. Do we have a date of installation, or can we get Eversource those questions answered from Eversource for for Puritans?
Yes, I don't have that date. Typically, if there's a power outage, they have to give 21 days' notice. So if they're if Eversource isn't anticipating a power outage, that's why the notice might not have gone out, but I'll certainly follow up with them.
Great, thank you. Was there somebody else that wanted to speak to this matter of the poll? I thought I heard two voices at once.
Madam Chair says Peter. Dean has his hand up. That's all.
Yeah, just a follow-up. I wonder if it's possible that perhaps through Mr. Stanton's offices that the Eversource people could get in touch with the with the manager at Puritan and just go over the timing of this and make sure there's no interruption in their service. I also wanted to mention that I did notify the library leadership of this revised plan, so they're not on tonight, and so obviously they must not have any concerns, but they were they're aware of it.
Okay, thank you, Dean, for the follow-up. All right. I don't hear any other people that want to speak to this, so do we want to make a motion to approve this now?
Madam Chair, the Board of Selectmen proves the request of Eversource and Verizon for this new poll location as submitted.
A second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, let's take a roll call vote. Peter?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Corey?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
The chair says aye. Okay, thank you, Mr. Stanton, and that will conclude the hearing. Do we need a motion to close the hearing?
Yes, we'll move. Second.
Second, okay. Take a vote to close the hearing. Dean?
Aye.
Corey?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Chair says aye. Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, have a good evening.
You too. Bye-bye.
Okay, so our next items up for discussion are our business agenda, and that's board discussion items only. And again, I'm going to ask if you are not part of, if you're not speaking, to please mute your audio and disable your video until that time. Our first order of business tonight is shellfish area opening. This is an annual opening for Mill Creek, Taylor Pond, Champlain Creek, and Oyster Pond and Bucks Creek. And I think Shellfish Constable Dyna is on the call tonight.
Yes, good evening, Madam Chair and Board of Selectmen. Yes, I'm here for my annual request to open our seasonal areas. We do have one caveat, or actually two. We have yet received water quality reports for Oyster Pond and Bucks Creek. So I would recommend that those areas are approved pending approval from the Division of Marine Fisheries. We should receive all of that water quality data prior to December 1st.
Okay. I think we need to have Corey read the, well, I guess we need to vote to approve this and then have you read these, read the notifications. I think that's the process. Do we have a motion to approve?
We approve the recommendation of the Shellfish Constable that the board vote to open Mill Creek, Taylor's Pond, Champlain Creek, and Oyster Pond and Bucks Creek pending MADMF notification to the harvesting of shellfish effective December 1, 2020, and sign the official notices. And I assume those can be signed electronically, Hannah?
Yes, we use the signature stamps.
That's my motion.
And to be signed electronically and seconded, okay. Let's take a roll call vote, and then we'll have Corey read the notifications. Dean?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Corey?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
And chair says aye. All right, they've been approved. Do you want to read the notifications, Corey, please?
Absolutely. Shellfish rules and regulations, November 24, 2020, open effective December 1, 2020. The waters and flats of Taylor's Pond, north of a line drawn across the mouth of the pond, are open to the taking of shellfish by permit holders until further further notice, signed by the Board of Selectmen. November 24, 2020, open effective December 1, 2020. The Oyster Pond east of a line from Kelly Landing to Long Point is open to the taking of shellfish by permit holders until further notice, signed by the Board of Selectmen. November 24, 2020, open effective December 1, 2020. The water and flats of Mill Creek, north of a line drawn from the western breakwater to the eastern breakwater at the mouth of Mill Creek and south of a line drawn across the mouth of Taylor's Pond, are open to the taking of shellfish by permit holders until further notice, signed by the Board of Selectmen. November 24, 2020, open effective December 1, 2020. The waters, flats, and all tributaries of Champlain Creek, northwest of a line drawn from the outermost piling as the town boat ramp northeasterly to the quote "no shellfishing" unquote sign in the marsh on the opposite shore are open to the taking of shellfish by permit holders until further notice, signed by the Board of Selectmen. And finally, November 24, 2020, open effective December 1, 2020. The waters and flats of Bucks Creek, north of a line across the mouth of the creek and east of a line across the mouth of Kukukoe Creek are open to the taking of shellfish by permit holders until further notice, signed by the Board of Selectmen.
Thank you, Corey. Thank you. Thank you, Renee.
Thank you, good night.
Good night.
Night.
Okay, our next order of business is the Cape and Vineyard Electric Cooperative. We're getting an update from the executive director, Liz Argo. Liz, welcome. I don't know if our representative, Robert Wurzshafter, is on the call as well, but welcome, Liz, and I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, good evening. I don't see Bob Wurzshafter on the list, but let me start off by thanking you for sending him our way. He's been terrific as a representative, and he also serves on our board as our treasurer. So he has stepped up to the plate big time, and we're really appreciative of his leadership. I'd also like to take this moment to have Maria Marasco introduce herself. She has been taken on as the deputy director at CIVEC. Maria, if you can speak, hopefully your picture will come up.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Maria Marasco, and I am the deputy director at CIVEC. Some of you may have known me in my former capacity as a regional director for the administration for the Mass Office of Business Development. Jill will recognize that, so I want to say good evening and in advance of our meeting, wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you and welcome.
Thanks, Maria. So if it's permissible, I would share my screen and just go quickly through a presentation here. Very good. I have to switch my brain from Zoom to Teams. Okay, here it is. And do I have to get permission? Can you see the screen?
Yes.
Oh, excellent. This is easier than Zoom. So we're here tonight to bring you up to speed on the the CIVEC activities over the last few years, especially with a focus on FY '20. I introduced Maria. I'd also note that we have a new board president. Leo Kakounis has been the leader of CIVEC in the president's position for many years, but he is now, in fact, there's a picture of a cranberry bog, that's where he is right now, probably in the dark, in fact, because cranberry picking season is, there's nobody waiting around. So Leo stepped down, and we have a new board president, William Lake, from Aquina, and he is a retired lawyer, so serving us well. And Maria Marasco, I should note, is also a lawyer, so we've we've got our lawyer capacities well covered. And with Bob Wurzshafter from Chatham as a treasurer, we are in good hands. Cape and Vineyard Electric Cooperative is a sister organization to the Cape Light Compact. We were organized under legislation, special legislation, Chapter 146, allowing us to be a nonprofit governmental entity energy cooperative. We started with three members, and we now have 24 members from on and off Cape. We're actually expanding to serve off-Cape communities. And the island of Nantucket has also joined CIVEC's ranks. And how do we accomplish our mission, which is renewable energy? We do that through buying power, through transferring net metering credits to towns to lower electric costs. And we are participating in the ISO New England Grid. There They're the system operators for New England. We participate with ISO New England to help make our renewable energy work to stabilize the grid. Lately, we've been focusing, again, also on electric vehicles, bringing forward cars and charging stations. And Maria Marasco is heading up that effort. This is a quick snapshot of all of the current members. As I mentioned, we kind of keep growing, so we'll have two slides next year. And the way we accomplish our renewable energy mission is by putting together bundles of projects and putting out a request for proposals, an RFP, using public procurement, to market and bring the market to us. So with the bundling of projects, the market sits up. They're paid very close attention because they can pick up a 1 megawatt project along with 550 kilowatt projects, and then they have their year set for them. So the first round that we did, the first RFP round, was 750 kilowatts. It included a lot of schools. Harwich Elementary School was in that round. Then we went right into round one, and that was 16 megawatts. And that includes the Chatham Cap landfill. Those were our biggest projects. It was quite the coup to have 16 megawatts go in back in 2014, 2015. We went to round two, 12 megawatts, a lot of projects for DY High School, sorry, DY Regional School District. And then recently, we did round three, went online last December, so a year ago. Yarmouth Fire Station is an example of a project that was put on in round three. And round four below, we have Monomoy High School. We broke rent on Monomoy High School in October, September. And so that's another 12 megawatts that's going forward. And we're excited because that's going to include storage, battery storage. Round five is just completed contracting, and that includes two projects in Chatham. The Chatham Police Station will get a solar canopy, and the Chatham Recreation Center will get photovoltaics with storage. Round six has been initiated, and we are collecting projects for our round six. So right now, we have about 32 megawatts. By the time round four and round five are completed, we will be up in the 54-megawatt vicinity, which is a small power plant. So thanks to the towns, hats off, you're bringing renewable energy forward in a big way on Cape Cod and the island. And maybe the biggest news is the end of FY '20, ending in June, at the end of June, we had saved over $16.9 million to our towns and school districts and fire districts and so on. Of course, we far, but it's almost six months later, so we're well over $17 million now. And while we focus on the green, because we are presenting to a Board of Selectmen where your focus is the bottom line, we all know that it's also so important to recommend or to note that we're reducing greenhouse gases with an equivalent amount. As much money in green as we're saving, we're reducing greenhouse gases with our green renewable installations. Where, as I mentioned, we're doing electric cars and charging stations. In fact, Evan Malillo was a CIVEC consultant working with Chatham for a few years. And we've gone off-Cape and have vendors who are building projects off-Cape. And we bring forward net metering credits through power purchase agreements. Chatham is a participant in these programs as well, and we'll break that down in future slides. Lately, we've been doing consultancy services. This is new. We are providing, for the town of Yarmouth, for example, we get all of the electric bills from EverSource. And when we pay those bills, CIVEC pays the bills through the Munis software platform that most of the towns utilize. The town gets the signal that there's a payment that's been ready to be processed. It gets processed. And what that makes CIVEC able to do is really look at the net metering credits and pair those with the energy usage. So we can really optimize our database and make sure that we're getting the best that we can out of our renewable energy projects by lowering costs and providing some cash, which is the case for the Chatham Cap landfill, which pays you in cash. We keep our eye on the legislation and the regulators. We are trying to secure relief from taxation of municipal solar. The Chatham Cap landfill, for instance, is, has to be taxed, gets a property tax. We'd like to see towns able to opt out of that because there's a lot of paperwork. And frankly, what you do is you tax, it ends up being taxed, and then the vendors charge you for the taxes they have to pay. So it's really just one hand. And what we'd like to see that be done away with if it works for the towns. We also keep a close eye on EverSource. They are rearranging the rates and changing the way rates are... The structure of rates, electric rates. And it's really critical that we keep our eye on that because they recently wanted to change and put a lot of the rate structure into what's called demand as opposed to usage, kilowatt-hours. They were looking to put it in kilowatts versus kilowatt-hours. That would have devalued net metering credits drastically. And all of the towns, not only on the Cape and Martha's Vineyard, but across Massachusetts, depend on net metering value to be stable. So we were very successful in that. We'll keep our eye on that. So what's going on in FY '20? I'm going to jump down to the really big one. We've been coming here, year after year, asking for an extension on an adder for our round-one projects, which includes the Chatham Cap landfill. We are doing well enough to say we no longer need your round-one adder. So we've had a lot of fun going out and doing these presentations to the towns because they very rarely have anybody come and make a presentation and say, "We're going to reduce our costs." So there you go. Congratulations. We are able to now avoid that cost to you. And thank you, though, for your years of support because that's what's made CIVEC able to go forward in such a big way. Let's look at what we have going on in Chatham and what it's done for you. The Chatham Cap landfill is almost 2 megawatts. 1,800 is about 2 megawatts. And the savings that you get in cash this year, last year, was $192,000. Didn't cost you anything. It was put in by CIVEC. There's a third-party owner who put up the capital, and the town of Chatham has saved $192,000 just in the last year. You also have the PV, the blue squares or rectangles on your Chatham Police Station. That's 22 kilowatts, far smaller, but it's still providing savings. In this case, it's not coming in cash. That's a typo that we need to fix. This is coming in savings behind your meter. So you are avoiding electric costs. EverSource cannot charge you for power you do not consume. And thanks to having 22 kilowatts on your roof, this is the amount of dollars that you would be paying to EverSource that you no longer pay. We also have a Chatham Town Hall Annex right across the parking lot. Same situation, the PV on the roof feeds the facility with power, so you avoid paying the utility electric costs. We have coming... Coming up, let me read this. It says it's on, but this is not on yet. This is 97 kilowatts. We have to do a better update with our projects. We've been doing one of these or two of these a week. This is, oh, no, it is on. So this is on and running. I don't have an actual picture because this was, this is the picture of it under construction, the proposal. It is in, it is on, and it's only done a partial year. And even in this partial year, it's earned, that saved the town of Chatham $6,000. So I think the next slide, this is what you're taking in as an off-taker. I mentioned that we have power sales off-Cape. We also, you are taking net metering credits from Harwich, Tisbury, and West Tisbury's Cap landfills, from Barnstable Fire District and from Egertown's Nunny Pogwell Project, and also from those two projects off-Cape. And as an off-taker, you have saved this year $154,000, almost $155,000. So here is your total. Chatham landfill PV, police station PV, Town Hall Annex PV, and the new fire station PV that just went live last December, partial year, has earned the town of Chatham $205,000 in FY '20. The off-taker savings total added to that was $17,000. So your total savings this year is $222,000, almost $222,500. So again, not bad for a $25 membership fee. What's coming up? So as you can see, the PV is on the Chatham Police Station. We put the Chatham Police Station in our round-four RFP, and we have hired a developer, sorry, round-five, a developer to put on solar canopies, carports, canopies. And that will be going on in the next year and a half. And once that's live, this is a lease situation. It's a very unusual situation. The developer who is going to build this and own it will pay Chatham almost $3,000 annually for the use of the airspace. And it will also provide protection from the sun and the elements for the cars. And so it's a win-win in multiple ways. We're also doing a rec center installation on the top of the recreation building. And this one will feed the facility directly, much like we were looking at with the Chatham Police Station and the Chatham Annex. And so the savings by avoiding electric costs will be almost $9,000 annually. We'll also have a battery here. We're working towards resilience wherever we can, and there will probably be additional money coming to Chatham through battery storage, working with the Cape Light Compact Demand Response Program called Connected Solutions. So total savings through CIVEC in FY '20, $222,000. Projected annual savings from the new projects that we hope to see go in within the next year, $12,000. So projected, we do need to do a better job, don't we? Projected annual savings was, let's see if I can go back. Oh, I'm so sorry. I've lost my presentation. Here it is. And we zip down to the bottom. Was $234,000. So that's projected annual savings by the end of FY '22. And that ends our presentation. We're going to have to go back to the drawing board and fix our boo-boos, but any questions?
Liz, thank you. Peter has a question. And then Jeff.
Hi, Liz.
Nice to see you.
Nice to see you, Peter.
I thought you were going to retire.
No, that was a rumor that's been going around. And I will retire someday, you can be sure. But we're not ready to retire the old horse yet.
I don't think we want you to retire. But in any case, thank you for the presentation. I remember when we were first trying to put CIVEC into Chatham. It went over pretty well, but it took a while to get it approved. I was just wondering, and I probably shouldn't know, but is there any way for us to go back to get storage in, let's say, like the landfill? Is that possible? Because storage is where you really need to go, I mean, in the future.
Yeah, we agree. So right now, CIVEC is joined in a committee called Storage and New Technology that's being, that was put together by an organization called New Northeastern Energy and Commerce Association, otherwise known as NECA. And they have a committee, Storage and New Technology, and we're all looking at this. There's a lot of varieties of batteries. There's from the very small residential power wall from Tesla to the big ones that are being put in, for instance, on Martha's Vineyard and in Provincetown by EverSource. So there's a full range, and they all have different capabilities. And more importantly, they have different price tags. And so far, the price tag to do something, what I'm going to call retrofit areas to existing PV is not, it's not economical yet. But there are a lot of very interested parties. It's a potential great moneymaker, and it clearly is what the grid needs, the electric grid needs, to have leveling off of photovoltaics so that it's not intermittent, but it's dependable power resource. So this is going to evolve, and it will evolve very quickly. The littler photovoltaic installations that we have, like at the Annex and the police station, we are doing the solar canopy. And we will look to have those retrofitted with photovoltaics as soon as we can. You had round three, you had a project on the Chatham Fire Station. We had hoped back then that we would be able to do a battery. It just wasn't there yet. So the same developer who put in the Chatham Fire Station PV that went live in December is looking into this because we hope to do a change order and basically bring forward a solution that we don't have to go back out with an RFP. We can just go forward with batteries to pair with those PV systems. But it's not real evident the market has that solution ready to go. They've been, we even lost a few developers. We had, for instance, Tesla, the Power Wall. It's very active in, it's so backlogged right now with the residential and the power walls that they're not making any, and they can't deliver anything for at least a year. And then there was another developer called NECA, which had a good competitor. They're out of business. So I was actually talking to Department of Energy Resources today about the fact that we're seeing places where there is a solution and then a long gap, meaning there's a lot of solutions for really small, and then there's nothing in the middle, and then there's the utility-scale solutions. So we're working on that and hope to have solutions. And believe me, we'll jump right on it.
All right, thank you, Liz.
Thank you, Peter. Jeff? You're muted, Jeff.
Yep, thank you, Madam Chair. Just a comment and a question, Liz. Great presentation. This stuff really gets me going. And I'm really pleased to see Chatham be on the forefront, has been on the forefront for quite a while here in terms of its development of solar power. And it's real return to the town and real return to the environment. So I find it terribly exciting. I'm an owner of solar panels myself, and so I really get it. But I want to know, when you refer to storage, this is my question, what does that actually mean? Are we storing power for use at night and/or when we're off the grid? Is that what you mean by storage? And Monomoy is going to have that? Monomoy High School is going to have that capability, you said?
No, Monomoy High School will not. I don't know how I misinterpreted that.
It's on the slide.
I don't have Monomoy High School on your slide for the presentation. Let's see what we have here.
Was it the community center?
Oh, I don't know. I don't know. It said Monomoy.
I bet it was the community center. This one. This one will have battery. You can see my screen right before I blab on.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, keep going, Liz. It is a prior slide, if you go up.
Here's the police station. Oh, I bet you, I know what you're talking about. I think I mentioned that Monomoy is, no, no.
All right, you said.
I don't know where that came in.
I don't know. It was on a slide, I thought. I'm dreaming.
All right, here we go. I hope I'm not taking up too much time. I'm just going in order now.
Slide four, Liz, mentions Monomoy High School, or has a picture of Monomoy.
Oh, very good. Yes, so that is round three, but it is going in same way. It was part of the same RFP that brought you the Chatham Fire Station installation. It doesn't have storage either. So neither of these have storage.
So but if it did, what would it allow us to do, Liz? Is my question.
Oh, right. So if, when, let's say when, we can bring forward storage, the key, it's one of the problems we're encountering is that we'd like to see it do everything. These batteries do everything. We'd like to see them provide resilience. And let me close this so we can, you can see yourselves again. It would provide resilience in situations where the grid is down, and it would participate in the markets so that the Connected Solutions Program that the Cape Light Compact, for instance, is providing, will provide awards for being able to provide power when the grid is stressed, when the grid is challenged. So we're not having to build as many fossil fuel plants because we have not only renewables, but battery power. So that's what the state is developing, these response programs, basically. And we want the batteries to be able to participate in those programs and be able to provide you resilience when the grid is down. This is a very tough order. Once again, it's turning out that it's very expensive to provide both of those capacities in the same package. But we're working hard to find that solution. So that's what we will be bringing back to you, hopefully. And in the case of the rec center, because you do get a battery with the rec center. So that will at least provide... so that will at least provide participation in the Cape Light Compact program. And we will work really hard to get it to add, get the developer to add whatever is needed to be able to island it from the grid. When the grid goes down, the problem is these photovoltaics can't keep sending power out because it will electrocute workers on the lines. So there's what is called islanding. You need to literally have a switch that gets thrown so that no power from either the existing PV or the battery can send power out to the grid, which is, of course, meanwhile, you want to have them up and running to power the facility. So that adding that islanding ability is a challenge and it's more expensive.
Thank you. Thank you.
Sorry you asked.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions for Liz tonight? Okay, I don't see any. Thank you, Liz, very much. It was such an interesting presentation. Always like the feel-good one for us.
Isn't it nice?
Yeah, yeah. And thank you, Maria. It's nice to virtually meet you as well. And thank you.
Good work, Chatham. Thanks. Good night.
Likewise. A pleasure to meet you all and have a good night.
Thank you. Take care. Good night. Okay, we're going to move on from green energy to blue economy. And so our next item in our business agenda is the Blue Economy Expedition Project. And we're getting an update from the Director of Community Development, Katie Donovan. Hi, Katie.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. Also on the call tonight for questions are Ted Keon, Dr. Dunkinson, and also Bert Jackson from the Cape Cod Chamber Blue Economy Project. So if you'll recall from this past March, Chatham was selected for participation in the Cape Cod Chamber of Commerce, Chamber of Commerce's Expedition Blue Project. Expedition Blue is described as a network of sites in the Cape Cod region showcasing how water anchors our landscape, powers our economy, and inspires our future. A key component of the overall Cape Cod Blue Economy Project, Expedition Blue builds awareness of the past, present, and future of the blue economy in our region. It connects the broad regional interests and offerings of the blue economy sectors and appeals to a wide range of audiences of educators, visitors, locals, and special interest groups. So if you'll recall back in March, we had thought that we would, or we had talked with the board about potentially placing a primary structure at the Eldridge Garage property. And I think, you know, the board, for a number of reasons, had concerns about that location. So we put a working group together made of myself, Chairman Davis, Dr. Dunkinson, Ted Keon, Renee Gagny, and John Papalardo from the Cape Cod Commercial Fishermen's Alliance. And we looked at a number of different sites, working with Bert Jackson from the Blue Economy Project, and we came up with four locations. So our primary location that we're proposing now would be for 90 Bridge Street with satellite locations at Oyster Pond, the Lighthouse Overlook, and the Fish Pier. So I had included maps in your packet for those locations. And if you'd like, if it's helpful, I could share my screen to show on the kit of parts the different installations that are being proposed.
Thank you. Please do.
Did that come up?
No.
Each time I share my screen, I tend to have an issue. Let's see here. Try that one more time. I had it up on the screen before, so let's see. Okay, I apologize, Madam Chair. I'm still having an issue trying to share my screen at this point in time. But if you'll, if you'll.
They're in our packet.
They are in your packet, right. So the idea would be that we would put one of the extra small, option two of the extra small installations at the 90 Bridge Street location. And then for the other three locations, we would be looking at the taller of the two, extra, extra small. It's basically a post with a viewfinder along the side of it. And so I would like to actually ask Mr. Jackson if he'd like to help, just to kind of tell the story of what the intent of the Blue Economy Project is. So if Mr. Jackson's available, I think that would be beneficial.
Hi, Bert, welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Katie, for having me. I'm Bert Jackson with the Cape Cod Blue Economy Project at the Cape Cod Chamber of Commerce and appreciate the work that Chatham has done to make an effort to be a part of this important network. We have 10 towns total in the Cape Cod region that are participating in Expedition Blue, the Waypoint Project. And we think Chatham is a critical part of the blue economy, both from terms of the history, but also in terms of the future. And the Blue Economy Project in overall, you know, we've got two major areas of focus. One is building a regional identity, building a sense of pride in place of our region, which we certainly do have a lot to be proud of. And the second is really more pure economic development. How can we help blue economy businesses grow and thrive? How can we help build a prepared and educated workforce? And also, how can we make sure that we're protecting our environment? Because a healthy economy equals a healthy environment for all of us here. So we are big advocates for making sure that our environment stays as pristine as possible. And Expedition Blue is an effort to help tell the story of the blue economy throughout the region. It's almost a trail or an expedition that somebody can actually follow throughout the various towns and regions. And aside from the installations that you see in front of you as part of the kit of parts, there's also a responsive website that's going to be backing this up. And we're going to have information specific to the various locations that's available at each of these installations. They will feature, the installations will feature either a QR code or an RFID chip so that somebody can quickly pull up information about that location while they're there, and as well as having additional information. So if, for example, you know, you're at the Chatham Fish Pier and you pull up some information about that, aside from information about the Fish Pier, you might get some information about some other things in the area, maybe Chatham Bar's Inn or some of the other blue economy items of interest in that area. So the, from a practical standpoint, you know, these structures have been designed by an architectural firm called Cambridge Seven, who also designed the Boston Aquarium, and they also designed the Gloucester Harbor Walk, which this, there was some genesis of that from that to this. The structures are all made from, the wood is thermally modified wood, but it's been thermally modified to last for 25 to 50 years. The frames are powder coated steel. And we sent a packet to Katie that describes the anchoring for the various, the various structures, depending on which one it is. So at this point, you know, we've been looking at the posts for the three locations that Katie mentioned, and the extra small panel, I think, version two, the XS2 panel for the Bridge Street location. And I think that's a great spot. I think there's a lot of stories to tell from there. I know when we toured that area earlier this year, Madam Chair, I think your daughter was there selling fish?
I think she was, yeah.
Yes, yes. You know, so there's a lot, there's a lot going on there, and so we're really looking forward to that. So, you know, what we're looking for is your approval to go forward with this. We have signed a contract with the vendor that is going to build these structures, and it's not public knowledge yet, but I will share it with you. It is a group called Mystic Scenic. This is a group that is very adept at building structures for placemaking. If you check out their website, just do a Google search for Mystic Scenic, you'll see that they're going to be quite competent for doing this. At this point, I'd entertain any questions about the project. Katie, any details you think that I have overlooked that we should share?
I have, I think, something that might be of a good note is that the flow of where these locations are, obviously, the waterside of the, you know, Chatham's loop. So it was a lot of consideration to be able to have people walking the loop, be able to access the stories that could be told from these various locations. Corey, you had your hand up first.
Thank you. Yeah, two questions. I know we've, you know, been around about the evolution of what is the best structure for the primary site and the option two, extra small version that we're going to use. We don't have it in our packet, but actually, how are they anchored? Is it, are the two posts anchored into the ground? Is it a concrete pad? How is it actually anchored?
It's with a concrete sonotube.
Okay, on whatever dirt or earth is present. Okay.
Yeah.
And also for clarification, any maintenance to any of these structures is on the town, correct?
That's correct. And once the unit is installed, we are gifting it to the town. And then you would be responsible for maintenance, you know. Hopefully, we've designed it so that maintenance would be minimal. I mean, naturally, if there's any, an accident or any act of vandalism, then that would, that would kick in. But otherwise, we're hoping that they're going to be maintenance-free for many years.
All right, thank you.
Thanks. Dean, you had your hand up next.
Yeah.
Questions?
Presentations. A couple of questions. So particularly the one at 90 Bridge Street, is that sort of in the, in the idea of a kiosk? Is that, we have these pictures of the sketches of the kits, so just trying to visualize like.
Well, it's a, it's a, it's a flat panel, so it's not, it's not, it's not a three-dimensional structure, aside from the four inches deep that the panel is. You know, we've been, honestly, we've been trying to avoid using the word kiosk because we think this is something a little bit more, it's a, it's a real interactive experience. But it is something that, you know, there'll be signage on the panel itself that talks generally about the Expedition Blue Project and specifically about some of the viewscapes that you're seeing right from there. It's really meant to be a window on the blue economy. That's what all of these are, is to be a place where you can actually witness the blue economy in action.
And you. I deserve feedback here. I'm not sure what it's from.
Yeah, I'm not sure what this, what is happening, Dean, but try again.
Well, just, you did mention, Mr. Jackson, that at each location, you would get additional information to sort of tie these together. In the pre-information technology days, you would have something like what they have in the Freedom Trail up in Boston, where you had an actual written brochure that would connect things. Are you going to be doing that sort of thing, either in writing or online, so that if someone really wanted to take the time to go from town to town?
Well, absolutely, that, absolutely. The, we don't plan on a brochure. We do think of this as a 21st century project. So, you know, we are, we are thinking that your mobile device is going to be, you know, key to part of the experience here. But the idea is that you will be able to, at any one of these locations, you know, so whether you're at the pier and you pull up some information there, you'll, first of all, you'll see the other locations in Chatham that are available. And you'll be able to, you know, get more in-depth information about each one of those locations.
Okay. So you're gifting them to the town. If, for example, we don't have in front of us tonight, but we did back in March, the actual contractual document.
The letter of commitment, yes.
If we, if, for example, we almost had a tornado yesterday, and if one of those came through and took one of these down, how expensive are they to replace and who would be responsible for putting it back up?
Well, I, since we are gifting it to the town and you are responsible for maintenance, I would presume that our insurance works in towns, honestly. But I imagine you have some insurance on property, and there would be a replacement cost for that. I don't have the exact amount of what one of these panels costs. It's a few thousand dollars, perhaps? The cubes were much more expensive. The cubes were five figures, I remember that from the, but the panel is a few thousand dollars.
I think these are very tastefully selected, by the way.
Thank you.
One sort of legal question I had when we did look at this back in March, there almost was a forever notion to it. Does the town have any ability to opt out and remove them at any point in the future if, for example, in the unlikely event we see there's a new board of selectmen, they want to do something else with the location, or move it, or whatever?
You know, honestly, I am not, I am not a lawyer, so I would not, I don't think I'd want to give a firm commitment on that. I think we were asking the town for a 10- or 15-year commitment in the, in the letter of commitment. But, you know, my general, my general feeling is, is that, you know, once we gift it to you, it really is up to you. You know, if you decided to remove it for whatever reason, you know, naturally, it would come off the network and we would, we would be disappointed in that. And we feel that we would, you know, it would take away from, you know, the value that we're providing to the town. But I don't know that there's, there's going to be a prohibition of you doing that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dean. Jeff?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Interesting, I have to applaud the four locations that you guys have come up with. It is so much better than the Eldridge Garage. It actually ties into our waterfront and our blue economy here in Chatham. So I think the locations are very appropriate. Are they, is each location anticipated to have just a panel? Is that the, is that the plan? It's a panel? Or are there boxes somewhere as well?
So at this, at this point, actually, the only location that's getting the panel is 90 Bridge Street.
Okay.
The other three locations are getting the extra, extra small posts, the tall posts, which has a viewfinder on it.
So it's just getting, they're just getting a post?
Yeah.
And then, and then the content that you say you're going to tie into, is it educational in nature as to what the blue economy means to Chatham, the Cape, and the world? Or is it more locally focused? What do you anticipate for content? And who's marketing this? Is the chamber, is Cape Cod Chamber marketing this, Bert?
So there's, there's two questions there. So the first is that, in terms of content, we're going to be working with you, with your team at the town, to develop content for each location. And, you know, the content can certainly be historical, although because this is ultimately an economic development project, we'd like to be looking forward as much as possible. So if you think about, you know, if you have grade school students or high school students that are coming and visiting these locations, what sort of things would you want to inspire to that, inspire them to, so that they could see that they might have a future here in the blue economy in our region? So that's, that's what I've been asking people to think about in terms of the kinds of stories that we'd like people to be thinking about for the towns. But ultimately, it's, it's something that, you know, we'll work on together. And I sent some information to Katie a week or so ago that sort of has the beginnings of that, some of the outlines for how we're starting to put that content together.
And is the Chamber of Commerce, Cape Cod Chamber, marketing this? Is that who's?
Yes, yes. So we are, you know, we've contracted with a marketing firm that's put together a marketing plan for this. We're actually pretty excited about, as I said, there's a responsive website that's going to be part of it. Everything will be at its own, expeditionblue.org. It has its own URL. And, you know, we are, there's a little bit of funding in the initial grant to start with marketing. As you probably recall, that this was project that was funded by a grant from the Commonwealth Seaport Economic Council. And, and so, but we're also seeking funding, you know, some ongoing funding to continue the marketing for this, both through, you know, through the website, social media, and other venues as well.
Yeah, there's certainly going to be a potentially very neat story to tell at 90 Bridge, where you may have an upweller behind you and folks shellfishing in front of you. Certainly a great story to tell in the overlook as fishing boats go by and people recreate. And certainly a great story down at the Fish Pier. I did have a question, the location at the Fish Pier, is that near the statue down there? down there? Um, Shereen?
No, no.
Is it along the walkway?
Yeah, it was, I think it was proposed over by the, um, loading docks, right? Was it up on the steps?
Yeah, it was on this, uh, I, I don't know your nomenclature, but the, the steps where you're initially walking from the parking lot down into
Okay.
a lot, on that second level, uh, there's a spot that you kind of, is kind of not completely in the, in the steps line of pa- line of path, where you can, you have a nice view of what's going on. So that was the considered location. Actually, it kind of attaching it to the rail.
So it wouldn't, it wouldn't over, it would look over the, um, to the, uh, fish pier loading dock, but it wouldn't impede the, um, vista of the, of the monument in any way.
Got it. Okay, thank, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Anybody else want to make some comments on, on the project? Katie, you're looking for a vote for approval tonight, a final vote for approval?
Yes, Madam Chair. And just, um, as a, a point for the board's information, the, um, we will be going to the, back to the Parks and Rec Commission on, um, next Tuesday, December 1st, although they've approved the concept of the post. Um, we just wanted to get the full commission's final, um, endorsement of the, uh, post at the location that we're proposing it, uh, right along the walkway. Um, and just so that the board is aware, um, I think, you know, to, moving forward with the project for, um, starting to tell the story, um, Ted Keon is going to be the project lead, um, moving forward for that portion of the project, um, now, once the locations have been finalized.
Thank you. So can we get a motion to approve?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I move that we approve the project as recommended by, uh, town staff.
Any second?
A second with the, the motion to read that is subject to approval by the, location approval by the Park and Rec always to pass.
That's fine.
Okay, great.
I, I
Got that changed.
Accept that amendment.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll take a, a roll call. Peter? I need a voice. Peter, you're muted.
Aye.
Thank you. And Corey?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
And Chair says aye. Okay, thank you. We'll be moving on.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bert. Thank you, Katie.
Thank you very much, everybody. Thank you, Katie.
You're welcome. And Ted and, uh, Dr. Duncanson as well, even though we didn't hear outwardly from them. Okay, our next agenda item is, uh, um, to report out on the meeting that we had from, from our meeting on November 7th, the goals and objectives. Um, I was gonna just sort of do the notes, Jill, or did you want us? Okay, all right. So I just wanted to go through, um, what we, how we laid things out this year, um, seeing that COVID-19 was, uh, impacting a lot of our ability to move forward with, uh, some of our, our, our work that we have been thinking about doing. Um, we did a, a review of our established mission and value statements. And, um, Jill did add to, um, a new goal category to our, to what we hope to accomplish. And, and so, um, in, in part of it, we have financial infrastructure. Um, Jill added social infrastructure, intergovernment review, town staff and boards, environment, his, and historic quality of the town, long-term planning, legal and communications, intergovernmental relationships. So, uh, we were able to do that. And how it was put together was really smart this year. Um, it was a smart goals methodology, uh, to lay out the objectives as specific actions and measurable steps towards reaching, uh, each of our goals. And the town man, uh, the town manager, um, could then take and, uh, take our, and develop a series of action items and tasks that would comprise of her goals and objectives for, for, for the year. Uh, the board members had submitted worksheets for goals for current, uh, calendar year 2021 and fiscal year 2022, and they were compiled for our review. And the board's goal, um, were, uh, was that the goals were coded in, uh, red for completed, green for carried forward in new goals, and yellow for pending or continued. And we reviewed those coded yellow and determined if we wanted to carry those, those goals forward, um, for next year. Um, there was agreement that the new goals reflected the board's discussions and concerns over the last six to nine months. We agreed that several items would need to be carried forward from the current year. And we agreed that seeking regional partnerships on a variety of issues should be a continued goal. By consensus, we agreed to leave the funds received from the Howich, um, from Howich to the wastewater intermunicipal agreement in free cash for now in order to have flexibility in this, um, in this period of fiscal uncertainty. We are due to get a next payment, um, of, uh, is due in fiscal year 2022. The board supported receiving quarterly reports from the Chamber of Commerce and the Merchants Association on the impacts of COVID-19 on local businesses. There were some concerns expressed with the wording of the goal to establish a resource database for cus- uh, for residents in need of assistance due to job and income loss due to COVID, um, and as there are other entities doing the same. Uh, we didn't want to be duplicating effort. It was, it was, sorry, I'm losing my space. Hold on. It was suggested, uh, an additional objective to explore additional revenue sources for the town be added to the fiscal category. And particularly, we talked about paid parking as one of those goals. Under the infrastructure category, the board discussed the ongoing goal of seeing the new council on aging facility approved and funded by town meeting. And it was suggested that this, uh, with the fiscal uncertainties due to COVID-19, that final design funding should be sought separately from the construction cost. It was suggested that we'd be, that we could, it was suggested that there could be changes to the design of the building in response to the pandemic. Um, we also saw a need to finalize the location. However, how to procedurally go through this was a question. Um, so what we'd like to see is that the owner's project manager, Rick Pomeroy, provide the board an update on cost for the project and any changes to the facilities designed due to COVID-19, uh, earlier than February, March timeframe that was suggested. The board discussed the Eldridge Garage property improvement project. And we are hesitant, um, there was a lot of discussion about this. We were hesitant to bring too many projects to town meeting. We need to prioritize projects. Um, the need to prioritize our projects was discussed. And they, and those discussed were the Crowwell drainage project, outstanding waterfront project, the transfer station redesign, and ongoing sewerin. Um, so basically, um, we noted that the projects are necessary. Some of the projects are necessary for safety reasons, like the transfer station, um, while others are providing economic opportunity. We supported a tiered approach to projects to keep them moving forward while minimizing the immediate expenses, even though this approach may be costly in the end. We wanted to move cautiously during these uncertain economic times. Um, we will schedule an agenda item for prioritizing projects, and the town manager will have staff develop a scorecard rating system to assist us in that effort. The board reviewed the goals in the social infrastructure category, and it was suggested that the town housing consultant be directed to hold round town table discussions on possible initiatives, um, with housing. The board agreed that pursuing the Chatham 365 recommendations and the effort, and the efforts to attract an academic research facility that to, uh, to the town did remain, remain as priorities. In reviewing the intergovernmental goals, um, uh, town manager Goldsmith did state the project prioritization had already been discussed. So a current goal to provide committee chairs, um, more training was revised, um, and that included the Microsoft Teams platform and, um, and how to run, uh, run remote meetings. It was suggested that recruitment for vacancies and information, how to apply to serve on a committee could be included in the town manager's community report, because I think a lot of times that gets lost in the process of, uh, what, what can you do to, to, um, apply for a committee. Um, it was suggested the current goal to create a more efficient board meetings be carried forward as the measures, uh, taken to do so are going to be reviewed, um, February 2021. That's the format that we're working in now. There were discussion on the, um, on the role of the board and airport matters, and we're also having a meeting on the Airport Commission and Board's governance. Uh, that's scheduled for next week. Uh, one con- uh, continued objective is to work with neighboring towns on the shark and seal safety issues and public education initiatives. But we also wanted to note that we're having, um, we're seeing at the fish pier, um, the seals there being more emboldened. So, uh, we're keeping our eye on, um, possible solutions to, to any issues that may arise. Our long-term planning goals were reviewed, and we agreed to revise and carry forward items on coastal resiliency and long-term planning for stage harbor concerning dredging and erosion. And continued, um, and we will be continuing to participate in the Cape Cod Commission's climate action plan. Uh, town manager Goldsmith said the strategy session for, um, National, Ammonemoi National Wildlife Refuge Boundary dispute is planned for the board on the ongoing legal issues. And I think that might come before us in January. The importance of communication was discussed, and the board supported a goal to create a policy which would require a public forum if a project met a certain criteria. Um, and as noted, the, the, um, town manager reported the, that some of the workload capacity challenges remaining, um, remained for certain staffs on COVID-19. Some of the action items within this timeline related to those goals and objectives may be impacted by COVID-19. So we really need to be cautious as we move forward. Uh, we had a really good meeting, and, uh, we did endorse the direction, these boards, um, uh, we did endorse the direction of our, um, of our goals and objectives for, um, the calendar year 2021 and fiscal year 2022. So in saying all that, I hope that gives everybody somewhat of an overview of, of where we're heading, uh, in our direction this year. And I didn't know if we had any other comments from the board or from Jill. Any comments? Dean?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I don't know. Are you planning to take a vote tonight to approve these?
Um, yeah, I thought we, we, did we not take a vote to approve them at the last meeting? Hold on. I think it was noted in the notes.
We took a vote, um, at the, um, at the goals and objectives session to, uh, for the general direction consistent with session.
Okay.
But I, I think we typically still, don't we, Ashana? Don't we typically take a formal vote approving the final version?
Yes, you do.
Okay.
So, uh, well, Chairman Davis, she gave a little more detail than what you're going to find in the, um, spreadsheet before you. So if you would like me to add some more detail to that, certainly you can do that.
I had a couple of questions, and I'm prepared to offer a motion, uh, if, if it's, if it's important. Um, just under the, the, on page one, under the infrastructure, and you did mention the, the, the action, the second item supporting, will be some council on aging, supporting annual town meeting article which may consider sequencing. I just want to make sure it's understood by everybody that, that it may consider sequ- the article that we're going to propose to town meeting, uh, may consider sequencing and it may not. I see. Oh, that, uh, Slickman Gokulis has, has advocated consideration of sequencing, and I think that's an important thing to consider. And I also see my connection is getting weak here.
Okay.
The second, the second, uh, comment on page two, under prioritization of capital projects, the third box, where it says, schedule a BOS agenda item to discuss and create a policy. Uh, I know what I had in mind, and this is fine, but as far as it goes, but I had in mind an actual session to actually prioritize projects, once we have the framework and the protocol placed.
Right.
So that could be added accordingly. Uh, I had a question for, for Jill, I guess, under the social infrastructure category, the second box under, um, increased the, the affordable housing, the special legislation allowing the town to use CPA funds for attainable projects. Does that require, um, will that require a town meeting vote to, to file that legislation? Or can the selectmen file it on their own, on our own?
I, I believe it's drafted for the selectmen to file on it, but let me just take a look. We, we have a, um, a draft from town council, but it didn't talk about the method for its approval. It just had the content of the special legislation.
When we did the, oh, uh, because once you, um, we did the approval on, on that, uh, special legislation that we did get, that's why I, I guess that's all I have. But do you want to, you want to vote tonight, Jill? Or are you going to come back with another refinement?
No, I would, yes, I would like a vote tonight. And then, um, just to further explain why there's not a separate set of, of objectives and goals for the town manager, it's, say, your action items are pretty specific, and I, I have clear direction, so I would carry out those action items. There weren't any additional items or categories that I needed to add to have a separate goal and objectives for the town manager.
So we're just voting on the board's goal then?
Correct. We'll change then what we've done in the past.
Madam Chair, I move approval of the goals and objectives presented with the, the, uh, subject to any refinements that town manager is going, going to make, uh, based on comments made tonight by myself or anyone else.
Jeff?
Second.
Second? And Jeff, did you have a comment?
I, I did. I just wanted to reinforce, uh, Selectman Castro's comment about the prioritization of capital projects. It was the consensus of the board to do just that. Wasn't necessarily create a policy to do that. So I think that's a very important nuance that I want to emphasize for our board and for the public as well.
Okay. Agreed. All right, let's take a vote. Go ahead.
Peter seconded the
Yes, I got that. Okay.
Madam Chair, just one of the things, since it's one of Jeff's items, on, uh, page one, financial, uh, just want to make sure that this meets the, the goal, explore opportunities for additional revenue sources. Um, but one item of that is to review or schedule discussion on paid parking. So I just want to make sure that there's still the, the overall goal, um, I'm sorry, it's the overall goal of financial. The objective is explore opportunities for additional revenue sources. And one of the task and action items is to, uh, review or the opportunity for paid parking.
Yeah, in response, Jill, that's perfect, because, you know, hopefully, I'll be bringing forward some other notions as well. But that, that's perfect. Thank you. Perfect.
All right, thank you.
Okay. All right. We all set to take a vote then? Okay. Now, Peter?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Corey?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
And the Chair says aye. All right, thank you. All right, our last order of business tonight is committee appointments, um, at the Airport Commission. Um, earlier this evening, we had, uh, an interview, um, with one of the applicants, Tom Wilson. And I'm, will note that in the past, uh, past June, we, no, hold on. Um, Pat, yes, the, um, past March, uh, we interviewed Michael Cortez. Um, Tom Wilson was interviewed today. And, uh, last June, we interviewed Carol Gordon. They're all, um, they're all applicants for a one vacancy for a term expiring June 30th, 2021. Um, so we, um, in the agenda packet, you might note that there's another, um, another name noted, Mr. Marsh, but he did, um, drop his name from being considered for the commission, um, earlier this evening. So we have three applicants, Tom Wilson, Michael Cortez, and Carol Gordon. So I will accept a motion to, to, to accept
Nominations, Madam Chair.
To accept nominations, yes.
Corey, answer the end of.
Corey, go ahead, Corey.
Um, I'll go, or Peter won, I mean, I'll go, I'll go. Uh, I move to appoint Michael Cortez to a, to the Airport Commission, Commission until, uh, June 30th, 2021, unless sooner revoked or successor is appointed.
Okay. Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second. Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Okay, hearing none. Um, we'll take the vote.
I think, we, we moved to a motion at this point, Madam Chair.
Okay, thanks.
There's a motion. I think it needs to be reread, since we were just
So we're just taking the nominations. So do we have a motion?
I'll reiterate if you want.
Yep, go ahead.
All right, then I move to appoint Michael Cortez to the Airport Commission until June 30th, 2021, unless sooner revoked or successor is appointed.
Second.
Second, okay. All right, I'll take a roll call vote. Um, yeah.
Aye.
Corey?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
And the Chair says aye. And the chair says aye. Okay. Uh, Michael Cortez has been, um, selected for the one vacancy, uh, term expiring June 30th, 2021. All right. Okay, thank you. So, um, our last, last order of business is public comments. I'll accept, um, um, hand raising and/or, um, if you cannot speak, if you don't have the hand raising capability, please speak your name out. Anybody wishing to speak for final public comments? Okay, I see none, so we will move on from public comments and vote to adjourn.
Move to adjourn, Madam Chair.
Second?
Second.
Second. Um, okay, I'll take a vote. Um, Cory?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. And I might note, it is quarter of eight, um, and I'm going to wish everybody, um, I'm going to thank everybody first for participating tonight, um, and the staff, for the, um, present, people making presentations, the staff and the support team behind the scenes. Also want to wish everybody, um, the best possible Thanksgiving they can have this year, and know that next year it will be better. Um, so everybody stay safe and stay well, and we will see you back here for our Tuesday night meeting, which will be on the airport governance, and that will start at 6:00 PM. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Jill. Good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone. Happy Thanksgiving.